All of you in the commission to order and sort of flag the meeting please.
I'd like to give you to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, we started as public comment. And. I'm gonna ask, I don't think there's anybody in the room. Is there anybody in the room who wants to make public comment? No, I won't. Is there anybody on Zoom that wants to make public comment? Please raise your hand. Okay, now go over the rules and since there's nobody. Open agenda, anything? Anybody wants to change?
No.
We are gonna move up item number. Seven. Um, to. For the, uh, before the executive session, before four. Since we have the sheriff and the sheriff here with, uh, just check out our business. So. Okay. Are you leaving this, Governor, or do you want this match?
I ended it. Yeah.
Morning. Kevin, this is Borough County Finance Director. Give me just one second here. Get to the agenda. So my packet. That said, I had a few minutes, so I didn't really get it.
It's so great on me.
Yeah. It's fine. Okay, um, so there's two items that I brought forward. For this, um, invoices, one's for the. Uh, purchase of vehicles, um, for the sheriff's office, and then the second one, you wanna? To go through individually, or do you want it?
I think they're both staying. Both, they're both the same.
Yeah.
Reason.
Yeah, so, um, I included in the, uh, in the agenda items, the reasons for the rejection of the claim. Uh, just to. Give a summary, um. Part of my duties by statute as the, as county accountant, I review, um, audit, review all the claims and demands that are presented, so basically any. Any bills or money that, uh, that goes out of the county. And there's a set of criteria that I review those based on, this is outlined in statute. And when I come upon something that I feel doesn't meet that criteria, I'm obligated under that statute to reject that and. Defer to the, the board commissioners with an explanation, so. That's what I did in this case. The, um. The logic and the reasoning is a little bit different, the two different, uh, situations, but I've covered, uh, quite, quite a pretty thorough, um. Uh. Commentary and about my, my rationale and my, my reasoning for those, so. I guess I would ask you.
Um, question. Yeah, your question. When you say I'm referring this to the board of commissioners for deliberation and action. What, what, what are the options for action?
Um. Yeah, so I don't, I'm not. County Council, but my, uh. And from my perspective, um, the option would be to. Uh, reject the payments, not pay them, uh, the claims to not pay them. Um, would be to, or alternatively to pay them. Um. I would note that, you know, payment of them, although it, you know, may, may be a good business decision, uh, doesn't change the. The circumstances surrounding the process that was used, uh, for the procurements, so, um. You know, we, uh, would likely be selected or identified by an auditor, and they probably have audit findings, but I certainly assume there's. More consideration outside of that. In the case of the fit and the vehicles we've taken possession, I believe, of the two.
Yes.
Uh, of the two vehicles. And in the case of the upfitting services, that's currently in progress.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Now, come on, when it comes to the auditors. Is, uh, what happens there? Okay, they're flagged for audit. What, what, tell us what the consequences of that is.
Um. So as part of the course of the financial audit, they, there's an internal control. Um, interviews and questionnaires that they do with the, the principals, though myself, that. Potentially, uh, one or all of the board commissioners. Uh, one of the questions on there is if we know any specific violations of policies or statutes, and so. I would have to, you know, disclose those, so it's not a matter of whether or not they'll find them, because I'll have to dispose them. Um. The. What happens? Um, it's. I can't say. How the auditors would characterize, so. They would look at what that violation was, and what they're most interested in is. What are the internal control processes that should have presented, prevented that from occurring in the first place, and then they'll review that process. Cause they, you know, they're not looking at the specific action, they're looking at what's the process that we did not let up to that. Um, and they could make a determination that there's no material issue, they could say that there's a significant deficiency in internal controls. They could say that there's a material weakness in internal controls, depending on, in their opinion, the severity of, and the likelihood that similar things could occur. Um, in a current environment, um, and whether or not it would have a material or significant impact on our connection. Statements.
Okay, so, you put in there, uh, because we don't want to. Or, and I don't think these guys think, you know, we don't want to. tarnish, I hope that's the word, your reputation, your credentials, you see what I'm saying? Is there, did you put a note in there that this was? Uh, recognized by the B O C and, uh, approved? Oh, and let me.
Yeah.
Okay, now, uh, also, I, I think over the last few days, I don't know, I disagree, and might wanna talk to the show. And the, uh, about of the other sheriff. I think there's some understanding that this happened. Yeah, and, and, and there's some progress that's being made. And would, would that be put in there for the auditors to see, okay? There's steps being taken. To correct this, or, you know, is that something that's done, or would make a difference?
You know, certainly, certainly would be part of the discussion, um, as I'd have to. You know, if there's an issue, I have to identify what we did to correct, you know, the, the internal control issue that caused it. Um, so, yeah, I, I agree, I, I just actually met with the sheriff and the sheriff last night again, and I think we had a, I don't wanna speak for them, I think they had a, a pretty productive conversation about. The processes and, and what that looks like going forward, so we don't, you know, end up in, in a situation that we're in. Um, in terms of, you know. My, my professional reputation, that, that's less of a concern, I'm just, you know, doing my job, and actually. You know, um, I've, I've, I've met my obligation by identifying it and, and reporting it to the board, so. Um, yeah, that's my, my obligation under, under statute, so my, my bond is safe.
We want you, and it's not just the legal part of it, we want you to do. What is, you know, supposedly required to do, that, you know.
Right.
So. But. Next to the board, and it's, or I don't. How this whole thing plays out.
Yeah. Just to add to that note, um, these, these are budgeted expenditures, so it's not like we're going outside of budget. Uh, they are plentifully distributed, uh, the process was not followed, and as such, according to our policies and procedures. Uh, Kevin and I cannot approve that. And so we're bringing to this, uh, while we've had conversations with the sheriff and. And, uh, Kevin and I, uh, you know, has met with him yesterday, uh, there's a commitment to, you know, uh, work around some of the, the challenges that we have in ordering, uh, these specific vehicles. In the future, and to come under compliance on, on. On these, and so with this, uh, like I said, it's, it's not like it wasn't in the budget, a process was not, uh, not followed. Uh, we'd asked that, uh, showing the good, uh, good faith that the sheriffs met with, uh. Sheriff Sykes, myself, and then had a separate meeting with, uh, Kevin to come into compliance with the policies, we'd like to do it, but our hands are not tied. If we could just. Say, okay, things are looking good. Uh, we can, we can get this taken care of. Our policy specifically states this has to come to the B O C for approval, and its policy was not, and pop process was not followed. And so we're anticipating, uh, that as we move forward, uh, we're gonna put in the proper practices and policies in the issue that this doesn't happen again. Uh, and, uh. And we'll be working towards that direction.
Are we up against any legal issues that we approved this because there wasn't, uh. The procurement policy wasn't followed.
As, as Kevin noted in the audit, there, there is a question that's asked, uh, as they do the audit, they do the investigations, and they, they call Kevin, they call myself, and they call. Uh, Chair Sykes, and they will say, is there any known issues, and we will have to, uh, identify this as, as a known issue. And saying, and addressing what we took, did to, to, uh, take care of the issue. And so it does get flagged for this next, uh, audit. And, uh, we'll address that, this is part of addressing that, in my mind.
And I would add, I'm not, and it was having a question for county council, I don't know. What the potential. Um, outcome or, or potential ramifications of the board, you know, offer as an expenditure that did well, the chairman of law.
Um, that's mine.
Yeah, I don't know for myself, I, I couldn't answer that specific question, uh, like with.
Research that, so. I mean, the vehicles are already here, they need the vehicles, and the budget, and I can get all of it, so, it's just. Being cautious then.
At a minimum, will be flagged in the, in the audit. I do, uh, you know, as far as criminal investigations, that that's not the case. In my mind.
That's why.
It's not in my mind, any criminal or, uh, kind of things like that, uh, for, for the sheriff or for you, yourselves. But.
Don't you, you be.
He asked that question. Um, but sure, this is part of the things that as we, as we have these processes, uh, we need to come in compliance. And, um, this is one of those ones where, um, we're. Already on the process of getting that way. Uh, correcting some, uh, traditional and historical kind of processes. And hopefully that'll make it easier for the sheriff's department, uh, office, as, as well as, uh, compliance on here. This one, we are just required to bring it to the B O C for, for the acknowledgement and understanding of those things.
So for me, I just wanna say, you know, I think that. Dave and I, at least in the campaign, I believe, Junior believes the same way, assuming. We're here, we're not providing, you know, it's a thing, that means having policies, and making sure that the policies are adhered to and followed. You know, and. Part of that is, you know. There's a potential that we won't have a clean up, you know. When. Last year, you know. It came to our attention, you know. From prior years of. The, um. Grant fund, you, you know. The grants not being for procedures and what. Being followed. It's not, you know, it's a flagging system. You know, just, with the counties. Continually having financial. Procedures not being followed and stuff, I don't want to ever jeopardize. Us receiving grants, because the county does receive as a whole, a large number of grants, you know. Deficiencies and stuff isn't reflected upon just one department. It reflects upon the whole county and this. And that's. Where concerns.
Well, someone I, I'll look back to him, you know. You know, we do have a lot of grants, and, you know, we're proposing some new things coming along. With this possibility of gonna be more. Other grants. From the state. And I always look at this as one of my. Real good assets. That we have to offer. You know, with things that are happening around the county. It's Kevin who. Cheats up on this, now, we've, we've given the tools, you know, we're getting the software, I think, you know, I mean, he lets us know if you're.
Working on it.
Yeah, we're working on it, okay. Because I think this is, I, I truly do, it's like the consortium we're talking about, now, I look at it as. It's something we have, nobody else has in this county. It's. That knowledge, that ability, and the willingness. With a finance person. To. Take care of these grants and other things, they, they might be different, you know, this one has different, so I, I want him to do what he's doing, because. To me, you know. And that's a, that's a good plus for our county.
And, and I think, um. You know, it's easy to look at, uh, surrounding counties and say, well, they're not holding these things up to the same levels, and quite frankly, um. I, you know, I can't speak to why, a lot of times it's just staffing, and, you know, uh, historical trends, and you just keep doing what you're doing. And that, that is to say that when we put in these policies, which I appreciate the B O C, uh, making this, I mean, uh, the purchasing policy and, uh. The, uh, risk assessment, the product items that were in, taking in place when I, right before I got hired a year ago. Were all, uh, components of findings from an audit. And so, uh, however, you don't turn, turn a battleship on a dime. And it takes a little bit of time, and we're getting, uh, better, like I said, you, uh, you've, you've funded, uh, some of the programs and softwares that'll help facilitate even better. Um, and we are coming into a better low level. Uh, of compliance with state and county standards. And, um. I hope that as we continue to do this, and I think this act in today is, uh, symbolic of. Of, you know, getting the processes in place and actually using the processes. And so I think that's a, that's a, a step in the right direction, and as we continue to make steps, uh, hopefully we can be, uh. An example for other counties of how to do things right, legal, and, uh, following the principles of good governance. And so, um, this is, like I said, I, uh, nothing malevolent, uh, behind this issue, it's kind of a historical thing. That we're pulling into compliance with, with, uh, with our new policies and procedures which reflect state and county. Uh. Ordinances amongst statutes.
You're ready? Sure. Tom Molesmore, County Sheriff. So on this note right here, this process, uh, that we. Are talking about today. Is the same process we've done for the last twenty-three years, and the vehicles we're talking about. Where they were approved in the process. And we already received two of them, but we still have vehicles coming in. This year, that we've already taken steps to correct the procedure on those vehicles, um. We didn't do anything that we haven't done for the last twenty-three years, you know. Every one of these vehicles were brought to the, the B O C and the budget committee, and approved during the budget committee. The procurement processes where we. Didn't follow, we just followed the process that we did do for the last twenty-three years, um, but there's no intent for anything. And going forward, we've already got. The process figured out. So. It'll be much easier when we do it next year, just adding a couple more steps for us. One more time, but that it is what it is on that.
Well, I appreciate that, um, steps are being taken, that remedy, that, that happened again. You know. We understand that, you know, creating some of this. Policies and stuff, can create an extra step, but. It's, again, it's important that we're in compliance with, you know, state law, county policy. So, again, we don't get flagged, and our audit is not having. That we're having deficiencies, we don't want. Why themselves are in the areas of deficiencies.
Okay, you know, I mean, you, you guys have your. Your best practices, which I, you know, I, I'm kind of acquainted to that, you know.
Yeah.
That's kind of what we're about, you know, and I think should. It's a much more than I go, so.
And I'm, I'm not one of the guys that begins changing all that and all for it, you know, and all that, seems like that. But like now, like you said, we work with Kevin, we had a meeting with Matt. And the meeting with Kevin yesterday was really productive, and to the point where. We got things going in a matter of hours. So, and you get here this morning, so.
So, I love.
Correct the action.
That's what I like to hear. Holders in the motion. Do you approve these?
Um. Motion would be to authorize, uh, payment. Of. Of, uh. Of each of the expenses.
I'd say, yeah. For border payment, and then they should be a little bit together, or. I.
I'd go with.
Well, there's separately, so I don't know.
So I guess I'd move for approval of the invoice to Robertson Motors. That sufficient for you?
Wait a second, hold on.
I'll second.
Then move to second, or any further discussion, all in favor?
I, I.
All opposed, motion through. Motion on second one.
So, setting all these, these out there, it's time for a big study, I've got stuff finished. But. Make motion to approve the invoice for. Better.
I'll second.
Then move to second, for the discussion. All in favor?
I.
All opposed, motion through. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you very much, everybody.
I'm gonna go to the script starts, now we're gonna need for that, so I'm gonna perform a, uh, training from there on. What is allowable and not allowable with these policies that got changed. Yeah.
We're gonna be.
I'll just come up here and sit up, okay?
Sorry. As a, as an elected official, and a person that's had things, you know, changed, um, you know, when you. You, you guys decide that you don't like the, whatever code I use, so you change it to your code. It would be really, really nice if you guys would have a, uh, policy change meeting that tells us what we're expected versus. The, the written, you know, here's what, what you guys are doing, and here's what, what I foresee as needs to happen, change for all of us. It'd be, you know, all of us together in the room. Here's, here's what's happening, here's what the expectations are. Would that be, I mean.
Yeah, actually, I.
Because we.
Believe that we had some meetings following the adoption of the procurement ordinance, uh, a little over a year ago. Um. I have to go back if, like I said, verify that, but.
Sure.
Um, and then certainly.
Well.
Questions, comments, I know.
Well.
There's, there was actually, uh, just let you know, um, our elected officials, um, uh, meeting that I have, uh, that was this. Um, this past week, I was planning to bring this up, but, uh, several people were out for, uh, a conference, a vacation, and such, and so we haven't, have done that. But we were gonna have just kind of a procurement one-on-one to talk about the different levels and, and that, just as a reminder.
I have, I have a fifty thousand dollar, um, grant I could get, but I'm like, I just. I mean, I just don't want, I mean, it, it, it's one of those federal ones, and I, I don't have anything to spend it on. So. You know what I mean? They have money for you, but unless you have something that you. Kevin talked about it, cause then I end up rolling it, and can you roll it, then he has to manage it. So, it'd just be nice to maybe have a refresher, so, uh. As an elected official, it'd be embarrassing to have that dismissal, um, put in public record, pardon you, with your name, to me.
No, that makes sense, and we can certainly. Do some more.
Ahead of that.
Education and training.
Ahead of the store, especially if you know what we've already asked for, so it's. So it's in the budget, so, you know, they're gonna buy those cars.
Yeah, I guess, I guess, at that point, I'll take a little bit of exception with that, there's, it's a, it's a county ordinance, there. Was a process with public hearings, and in a very public process, definitely going to adopt. Um, and it's, it's available and on, and has, uh, accessible by, by every county employee, so.
Right.
Um, certainly, I'm more than happy to have a little training, I'm more than happy to sit down one-on-one.
Or maybe choose a note.
Um, but, but at, at some, at, at some level, I mean, following the, the policies as, as they've been presented and adopted. I can't make people do that, so, um, in all fairness.
Okay. Okay, that works, I just, uh. Maybe I, I follow up.
Yeah, of course, you want another training session, be happy to accommodate that.
Okay.
Right.
Like, good, thanks, Bobby.
Good, how are you?
Okay. Thanks, Governor.
Yeah.
Go.
Okay, um. Next up, we're going to be going into executive session. And I will read the state, statement here. Uh. Pursuant to ORS one nine two dash six six zero two app. To consider information of records. Uh, that are exempt by law from public inspection regarding negotiations with Moore County Health District. On the provision of ambulance service within the. Southern A S A and Northern A S A. Of the county's ambulance service plan, the information, the records are exempt. Under ORS not one nine two dash three five, three three five one, which are communications within. And between public bodies of an advisory nature, ORS one nine two dash three three five nine, which is information. Uh, the disclosure of which is confidential or privileged under Oregon law, and ORS four zero dash two two five, point two two five, communications with legal counsel. Pursuant to ORS one nine two dash six six zero four, representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report. On any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general. Subject of the session as previously announced. Um, representatives of the news media and designated staff should be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience now leave the room, representative of the news media are specifically directed not to report on, or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations. Or anything said about these subjects during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session I've previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room.
One, that, one correction, yes, and northeast.
Northeast, northern, yeah, I, I, I have another one, sorry, it's northeast, I say.
Did I say northern?
You said north.
Okay.
Exactly.
Southern A S A and the northeast.
Yeah.
Okay. Well. Full of executive session. Got the dogs on the door. And I was trying to sort of, yeah.
So we have. Just, I will be putting these people in there.
Okay.
One, please say. Okay. Waiting room's empty, we are recording.
Okay. Um, I'm bringing the, uh. This meeting, this meeting of the Mark County Commission back into the different session. Um. Do I hear a motion?
So I'd make a motion to improve the language you forgot, you know, you have a lot of room between Borough County and Memorial County Health Districts. Can you hear a second?
I'll second.
The news have seconded, and any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
All opposed, motion through.
So I'll make a motion to approve the. General theme of the conference has been presented acknowledging that there's still some. Small details to be worked out between Borough Counties and Vicuoting, and Memorial County Health Districts, and wishing. Team and authorities. That was presenting people to come to a resolution. I'll second.
Not including second and any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Motion buried. Okay? Okay, with that, I will, is there any other business to come for the commission? About all the meeting of yours.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.